All right, I am calling the Castro Valley Unified School District Meeting of the Board of Education to order. Are there any requests for it? Nope. All right, so we will recess to closed session. All right, we are reconvening to open session. And we did take action in closed session. On a vote of five to zero, the board directed legal counsel to initiate or intervene in legal action. The action, did I read this whole thing? Okay. The action, the defendants and the other particulars shall, once formally commenced, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to effectuate service or of process on one or more of the unserved parties, or that to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. Welcome to our meeting. Item C, approval of the agenda.
I would move that we approve the agenda.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? There's no changes, right, to the agenda? Harveen.
Forgot to say Jennifer, who will not be here today.
Okay. I was wondering, because the student's award was somewhere else. Okay. Mike, your vote?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the agenda has been approved. Trusty Kuziak, the mission statement.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent, inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmute during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After your allotted time, you will be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on issues presented. All right, our next item is school report presentations and recognitions.
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Patrick Independent Elementary School. Welcome.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. It's so nice to be back in person. Good to see all of you. Thank you for inviting me to present tonight and to hear a little bit about what's going on at Independent. I'm excited to share some of the unique work that we've got tonight. Just like you start with your mission, I like to start with Independent's vision as well. So Independent Elementary School fosters the development of all students, encouraging them to grow into their unique and inspirational selves. Students transition to middle schools as emotionally literate, intellectually curious, academically capable, and socially conscious problem solvers who have an appreciation and curiosity for difference and the skills necessary to achieve their goals. Tonight, I'd like to focus in on the academically capable part of things, specifically what we're doing this year to make sure that all of our students are learning to read at grade level. So depending on how long you've been in the education world, you've probably heard about the debate about how to teach students to read the best way. Typically, this is referred to as the reading wars and generally framed as a battle between two distinct sides. On one side, Side A, we have those who believe in an intensive emphasis on phonics or understanding the relationship between sounds and letters with daily lessons that build in progression in a systematic order. On the other side, we have an emphasis on whole words or using clues to figure out unknown words as you're reading. In CVUSD, we have what we call the balanced literacy approach, where it's a melding of the two. No matter what strategy we use, a good chunk of students are going to learn to read no matter what. But to be effective educators, we need to ensure that all students, we need to be effective educators and make sure that all students are reaching our expectations. We need to center the needs of those students who may not necessarily learn to read at the first go. So what do we do? Luckily, this debate, as all debates do, has sparked a lot of research. And ultimately, the research that it's brought about has put this debate to rest. We now have a really clear understanding of how students learn to read, and it's now starting to influence our local and state policies, including in California. So basically, without getting too much into the weeds, we know that reading or learning to read is a progression of learning some discrete skills. You can see them here on the presentation. We start with listening comprehension, basically using verbal language to communicate. Then we build our vocabularies and strengthen our knowledge of the language structure. We move to phonemic awareness, which is being able to hear the distinct sounds within words and separate those out. Then applying those sounds to text, matching those sounds to the written language. Then we move into accurate and fluent reading, being able to read smoothly and with some speed, which ultimately brings us into reading comprehension or being able to understand what we're reading and using reading to learn. As you can see in this visual, which is a bulletin board in the Independent staff room, you can see that, you can still see the progression of those discrete skills, but it also shows that we're continuously honing these skills. It's not we learn one, then move to the next. We're constantly getting better at each of them as we go, moving from learning to read or learning how to do those discrete skills into reading to learn, with that transition pretty much happening around third grade, which is the reason for our district's level goal of making sure that all students are reading on grade level by the third grade. Simpler, people use the simple view of reading to describe this process, which is basically taking those discrete components of reading and organizing them into two big clumps. We've got language comprehension, or the ability to understand spoken language, which is our listening comprehension of vocabulary and oral language, and our decoding, which is the ability to apply sound-symbol relationships to the words we read. So that's the phonemic awareness, the phonics and the fluency. For example, I used to live in Hawaii. Hawaii has what we call a transparent orthography, or like each sound is assigned to a specific letter. So I can decode Hawaiian words pretty easily, but I have no idea what I'm reading. I have no language comprehension whatsoever. So my reading comprehension is none. I have no reading comprehension in Hawaii. If you flip it and think about Independent Secretary Nancy Law, she's completely fluent in Cantonese, can hold a conversation with anybody, but understanding the written characteristics or written characters of Chinese is difficult for her. So she's got the language comprehension, but she doesn't have the decoding, so her reading comprehension is pretty low as well. And then this, I like this picture because it combines the two. You can see the decoding and the language comprehension, the simple view of reading all the way over on one side with the discrete skills woven together into the wonderful thing of reading comprehension. So Independent took this and we created some goals. We have two SIPSA goals or school improvement goals, which are focused on this. The first one is our phonemic awareness goal. We got a new curriculum called Haggerty for kindergarten and first grade students that focuses specifically on phonemic awareness, explicitly teaching the skills of phonemic awareness to our little guys. And so the goal is the percentage of grade one students who are assessed with our phonemic awareness assessment in November of this year will change in these ways. Basically, we're looking to increase the number of students that are proficient in phonemic awareness skills. Then we have our second goal focused on this, which is focused on phonics. All second and third grade teachers got more professional development on our foundations curriculum, which is focused on phonics in the primary grades. And same with the phonemic awareness, we're looking to increase the number of students who originally tested lower in phonics skills. We're looking to increase those kids specifically in their phonics understanding as the year goes on. Now, here's the good part. What does this look like in the classroom? So this is a video of Ms. Teresa Hansen and Rachel Legan's classroom. We've got some little guys up in front there. They're going to be demonstrating the Haggerty curriculum for you. You're going to see them with their rhyming practice. They're going to be separating beginning sounds from words. They're going to be blending sounds together, and they're going to be separating the ending sounds of words. Here's Christ.
Rhyme time. Here we go, rhyme time. Lunch, brunch, or lunch, fly.
Lunch, brunch.
Ouch, fry, or ouch, couch.
Ouch, couch.
Lash, mash, or lash, me.
Lash, mash.
Good rhyming. Hush, mush, or hush, must.
Hush, mush.
Awesome. And fresh, free, or fresh, mesh.
Fresh, mesh.
Awesome. Get ready for the beginning sound, everyone. Follow your leader. I say sheep, you say sheep. Beginning sound?
Sh.
I say them, you say them. Beginning sound?
Sh.
I say choose, you say choose.
Choose.
Beginning sound?
Sh.
I say thumb, you say thumb.
Thumb.
Beginning sound? I say shout, you say shout.
Shout.
Beginning sound?
Sh.
Awesome. I'm going to chop, you're going to smash. If you're smashing, hands ready. The i.
It.
Chop.
Chop.
The e.
N.
Eat.
He.
At.
At.
In.
In.
Uh.
Chum.
Awesome. Get ready to punch. The last sound of a word. Get ready, everybody say punch. Punch. Nice, ready? Touch.
Touch.
Map.
Map.
One baby. Touch.
Touch.
Itch.
Itch.
Both.
Both.
And touch.
Touch.
Nice job. Are you ready to be the chopper?
The little guy in the red is Karen Eisenberg from HR's son. And then in second grade, we've got a phonics lesson here. This is Ms. Diana Saliva's classroom. You're going to be seeing them practice some letters, sounds, blends, and digraphs, as well as learning a new phonics rule. And then you'll see them do some word study, break apart the characters or the parts of the word.
A, pi, pu. A, y, pe, ke. E, ee, ee. A, apple, pa. E, ee, ee.
So how do you know what sound it's going to make when it's at the end of the word? We have some rules that we talked about for when it makes the start of the sound. Can you write some of the words that we already learned about? Like this one. This one.
Sky. Fly.
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 Happy.
Happy.
Cherry.
Cherry.
What kind of things that tells what sound it's going to make? What do all these words have in common? What do all these words have in common? What?
The v one, the y comes after the z. The v.
So it's a little quiet, but they're discussing when a y makes the e sounds or the i sound.
There's another rule that we can follow that too. So there's an important spelling pattern that we have here in braiding that will help us spell it. And that's that silent e, right? Like if we didn't have this, what would that word say right there?
Braiding.
That's not really a word, right? We have to put that silent e to show that it's braiding. Even with that suffix, we still have to follow that rule. Okay, so what are some things that we can do to mark up this word? Right. At the end, you mean? Yeah, we can do that. We're showing the e, or sorry, we're showing that y is making an e sound. We can check what we were talking about before, right? We can check that. We can keep the syllables. Right, so we've got a suffix on this word. Let's first circle that to show that that was at the end of our base word or word. And then we can keep those syllables separately. Braiding. Number one, we have a suffix.
So even though it's a little hard to see, you saw the progression of phonics instruction, the beginning letter sounds, like they're learning that all the way back in kindergarten, all the way to the end where they're looking at a word and breaking it up based off of the phonics rules, why we pronounce things the way that we do because of the way that they're spelled, and root words and all that kind of stuff. So, oops. Some data, my favorite. This is from our universal screener, which focuses on phonemic awareness and phonics and fluency, all of the different components of reading. It's a little bit complex, so I'm going to describe it a little bit. You see two different lines on each of the graphs. The blue is the beginning of the year assessment, and the red is the middle of the year assessment. We'll have another assessment at the end of the year. It's important to notice that as kids move up in the progression of reading, they're tested on different skills. So if you look at the phoneme segmentation one, the blue line is actually our current first graders who are tested at the beginning of the year, and the red line is our current kindergartners who are tested at the middle of the year. So this is actually one of the most impressive graphs in my mind. You can see that at the beginning of the year with the first graders in the blue line, the majority of them were performing below standard. They weren't meeting the expectations for phonemic segmentation, which is to be understood because last year it wasn't explicitly taught in classrooms. We just started that curriculum this year. And then with just half a year of instruction, you can see that the majority of our kindergartners are already outperforming our first graders from the beginning of the year. And if you look at its NW or nonsense words, this is being able to get a word that's not an actual word and choose the correct sounds of the letter and then say the word correctly. So you can see the letters correct and the words read. They're pretty consistent. These two also have younger students tested in the middle of the year versus the beginning of the year, and the lean is more towards the positive with the younger students. As with the middle of the year assessment, we see our younger students outperforming our older students. With our SIPSA goals specifically, if you remember the phonemic awareness goal, we were looking to, we're comparing our beginning of year assessment with our try one assessment. And we met this, we blew this out of the water in terms of the number of students that met the goal, with about 78% of students meeting the expectations and only 10% of our kindergartners or first graders below the expectation. If you remember from this chart, the majority of students were performing below the expectation at the beginning of the year. And then by the end of trimester one, we have the majority of them meeting the standard. With our phonics goal, the specific numbers we were looking for is we wanted 13.7% of our students that were tested below standard at the beginning of the year, now above standard, or only, sorry, only 13.7% continuing to be below. And we're at 13.5, so we outperformed this goal as well. So our focus on this science of reading stuff is proving to be beneficial, and I'm actually really excited to see what this does when these kindergartners and first graders are in third, fourth, and fifth grade, what that looks like with our BASS assessments and their SBAK assessments and so forth. So thank you for inviting me. Hopefully, I didn't put you to sleep for too long, but that's Independent.
Thank you for your presentation. We're going to have a couple of recognitions, and then we'll invite you back up to answer our questions. So, Trusty Adam.
The Governance Team, along with Independent Elementary School, are proud to honor Christian Vaz as their outstanding student. Christian is a model student who is determined in his efforts with his academics. He always puts forth an exemplary effort in all his classwork and homework. His desire to learn and grow parallels that one of some 20 years as senior, and his dedication to his studies demonstrates this. He has model behavior in class as well, attending during lessons and being a positive partner, group member during class. Christian is also a wonderful citizen. He helps his teacher in class and volunteers to beautify the school without being asked. He can be seen regularly holding the door open for adults. He cares about how people are feeling, and he can bring a smile to anyone's face. We are proud of recognizing Christian at Indy. He exemplifies what it means to soar and is a great example of what makes Independent a great place to learn. The Governance Team joins Independent Elementary School in honoring Christian Vaz as an outstanding student.
Christian, would you like to introduce any of your family that came with you or any
Thank you very much. So I get to present the award for the Volunteer of the Year to Hiba Curry. The Governance Team, along with Independent Elementary School, is proud to honor Hiba Curry. Hiba's a staple of the Independent community. She's given years to ensure students have the opportunities necessary to learn and grow. Along with being a room parent for the last nine years, nine years, amazing, she's also been a regular member of the PTA Board, being the VP of Events for four years, coordinating school dances, Eagle Thons, talent shows, movie nights, and much more. She's even taken on supporting the walkthrough registrations each year and being part of the fifth grade committee two different years, handling fundraisers and coordinating and ordering gifts for the school and students. Her efforts extend outside of PTA as well. She's been the independent coordinator for Castro Valley Outreach for four or more years, providing food during Thanksgiving to families in need, and trees and gifts to families during the holidays. She's been a volunteer noon supervisor to help even more, and she got her paperwork together and became a classified and credentialed substitute to ensure we've always had coverage when needed. He was beyond amazing and goes above and beyond to make Independent a great community. The Governance Team joins Independent Elementary School in honoring Hiba Curry as an outstanding volunteer. So. If you can. Sure. Who came with you?
About my family.
Yeah.
All right, board, do we have any questions or comments for Principal Hansen's friend?
Just thank you to Hiba and then to Christian for your contributions to your school communities. I do have a question for Pat. I loved the lesson. Thank you for the lesson. As someone who struggled in learning to read myself, it wasn't until the end of third grade that I really could read. I appreciate the interventions that I received, and I'm grateful for the science and the approach that you're taking here. I've always wondered if the English language were phonetic, would that help? The spelling impact one's ability to read?
Be a whole lot easier.
You would be out of a job.
Not close.
Glad to see you tonight. Thanks for coming to give that nice presentation. You know, you referred to it as the mystery of the science of reading. I'd call it the mystery of reading because, you know, I really don't understand how we learn how to read. So that's a good beginning there to explain that, but it's sort of magical, really, to me that we can translate printed words into thoughts and so forth. That's, and it is, as you mentioned, reading at standard in the third grade is on that wall back there is one of our core values, I think. So thanks for that. It's hugely important, and that was a very nice presentation, as always. And congratulations again to Christian and Hiba for all your efforts.
Yes, thank you very much, Independent Elementary School people for coming. Your presentation on reading was fascinating. It was not boring at all. I was, in fact, I wanted to know more. I was trying to write down the name of the program, not sure how it's spelled. Maybe you could tell me, make sure, and I want to look it up. And yeah, I'd love to know even more about this. Of course, I am a teacher, secondary teacher. I don't really teach reading, but I love education, so I would like to know more.
No, a lot has been said, but I just want to briefly say congratulations to you for meeting your goals, and congratulations to the teachers for all their efforts for meeting those goals, I mean, helping kids to read. And I love the statement, "Learn to read, to read to learn," and appreciate it. And Christian and Hiba, congratulations again.
Yeah, I mean, Patrick is just brilliant, brilliant at getting an excellent lesson. I think we should repeat that as many times as we can because when you talk about reading, it has to be intentional, consistent, and research-based, and that's what you saw. So thank you so much. Great job. And congratulations to actually our wonderful student who is a model. Nice to meet you. And thank you, Mrs. Curry, for nine years, and I know it's going to continue, so thank you so much. And by the way, your sister now can be a senior. We just promoted her. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and congratulations to the two honorees this evening. Would you like to introduce your staff that have come tonight?
Got a bunch. So Christian already introduced Melissa Vaz, our attendance secretary, and then Hiba, of course, is now one of our substitutes. So that's a good beginning there to explain that. But it's sort of magical really to me that we can translate printed words into thoughts and so forth. That's a, and it is, as you mentioned, reading at standard in the third grade is on that wall back there is one of our core values, I think. So thanks for that. It's hugely important and that was a very nice presentation as always. And congratulations again to Christian and Hiba for all your efforts.
Yes, thank you very much, Independent Elementary School people for coming. Your presentation on reading was fascinating. It was not boring at all. I was, in fact, I wanted to know more. I was trying to write down the name of the program, not sure how it's spelled. Maybe you could tell me, make sure, and I want to look it up. And yeah, I'd like, I'd love to know even more about this. Of course, I am a teacher, secondary teacher. I don't really teach reading, but I love education, so I would like to know more.
No, a lot has been said, but I just want to briefly say congratulations to you for meeting your goals and congratulations to the teachers for all their efforts for meeting those goals. I mean, helping kids to read. And I love the statement, learn to read, to read to learn, and appreciate it. And Christian and Hiba, congratulations again.
Yeah, I mean, Patrick is just brilliant, brilliant at getting an excellent lesson. I think we should repeat that as many times as we can because when you talk about reading, it's, it has to be intentional, consistent, and research-based, and that's what you saw. So thank you so much. Great job. And congratulations to actually our wonderful student who is a model. Nice to meet you and thank you, Mrs. Curry, for nine years, and I know it's going to continue. So thank you so much. And by the way, your sister now can be a senior. We just promoted her. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation and congratulations to the two honorees this evening. Would you like to introduce your staff that have come tonight?
Got a bunch. So Christian already introduced Melissa Vaz, our attendance secretary. And then Hiba, of course, is now one of our substitutes. We've got Lisa Bro, one of our third grade teachers, Nikki Cox, one of our fifth grade teachers, Paula Marigan, one of our TK teachers. And then online, I know we've got Carrie Eichman, a TK teacher, Maureen Martin, Elizabeth Cook, and Amy Coth watching right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will take a brief break. We'll reconvene at 6:35. So if any of you who are in the room need to go home and do homework, you can do that. But you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. Thank you. All right. We will move on to, is there anyone from CSCA on the line? Okay, and I saw Mark's name. Hi, Mark.
Hi, everybody. Want to let everybody know that we're looking forward to bargaining with the district. We delayed bargaining the whole contract for a couple of years because our big focus was on COVID and we worked pretty well during that crisis, the ongoing crisis, I should say. So we are looking forward to opening up the whole contract. We've visited every site. We've surveyed, given every member the opportunity to be surveyed. It has taken a little bit longer, but we do think that sometimes when you take a little bit longer, you get it right. And when you work together, you get it right as well. So we look forward to it and thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mark. Amy, do we have any requests to speak on items not on the agenda? Hi, Julio, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. My name is Julio. I am a parent of a fourth grader and I also have a middle schooler and a high schooler in the district. And I really wanted to say I appreciate all the work that's happened with administrators and the teachers as we are transitioning out of COVID and all the rules and everything that we've had to experience. And they've really done a good job to get us back in the classroom. In that same note, I wanted to just talk about my fourth grader who goes to Van Nuys. I think it's important that we get back to community building events. The Cougarathon is scheduled a month from now and they're not allowing the parents to go over there, only as parent volunteers. And I really think it's a missed opportunity. It's now going to be, if we miss this event two years, where we're not able to, to go onsite, have a great event that really brings a community together and it's also a fundraiser for the school. But more so, it's like, it's time missed. And as a, as a parent with somebody in fourth grade, next year is going to be fifth grade in our last year of Van Nuys, which we've already had, there's going to be our third child that graduates out of there. And it's really important, I think, it's an outdoor event. We're, I feel like we're creating rules that are not in line with what public health is saying. It's an outdoor event. It's a safe thing to do at this point. I really think the school district should reconsider making those things available because like, we need to get back to normalcy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. I'll move approval of the consent agenda. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, Mike, your vote, please.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the consent agenda is approved. All right, moving on to reports, discussion, and action items. Superintendent update.
Turn this on. This is, our cases are very low and I'm just happy to not see numbers that we used to see at all, like one, two maybe a day. So that's great. COVID-19 testing, we just wanted everyone to know that at-home antigen tests. Actually, this week, school sites are passing out the test to all the students and staff to test prior to returning on April 4th. Test number one should be administered Sunday. That is, that's what we are asking people to do April 3rd. And then test two should be administered Tuesday after they return, April 5th. So during spring break, we also have antigen testing for students and staff from 9:00 to 3:00 Monday on March 28th. And then on Wednesday, March 30th to April 1st, National Lab PCR for students and staff and community from 12:00 to 6:30 PM. And then other district updates, just a few things. Site administrators and district staff, and actually, I'm going to let you do this. Because it was a job fair. It was exciting. I got to see it.
It was very exciting and I want to thank our district as well as our district community for publicizing the event. We had over 75 teacher candidates that attended and we had first and second level interviews, which means, I'm going to date myself by saying this, but it's sort of like speed dating the show. It was very intense. We had 20-minute increments and we interviewed all the 75 candidates. And then if they were people that we really wanted to seek more information about, they went to a second level. So in total, we reached 115 interviews within a four-hour block of time. So it was pretty intense and we created some great candidates. We have some that are still waiting in the wings. We offered 10 contracts, five accepted to date, so we're moving right along. We also tried a new event inviting our classified. And what that took place, we were able to test right there at the spot candidates that were interested. And because of that, this week, we were able to have eligibility lists for the positions of cafeteria assistants, special education paraprofessional, campus supervisor, and general education paraprofessional. So this is an outstanding event. Again, I want to thank the community for spreading the word. There are a lot of people that are interested in working in Castro Valley. Unfortunately, we did, could not obviously take everyone. And so we want to thank the candidates also, and it was just an outstanding event. So because of that, save the date, March 25th, 2023. We're already making years, one year ahead of plan. Lock your calendars now, tell a friend, tell them again, tell them seven times. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was great. It was on the same time that Avid Walkathon was happening at the high school. So it was great. I got to see both. Thank you so much. Just a couple of other things. California State Assembly Member Bill Corks, 2022 Annual Women of the Year happened. And this year's honorees included our teachers, Teacher of the Year, Alyssa. So we're very excited to have her, Mr. Sal. And then congratulations to students at Canyon, Creekside, and Castro Valley High School, Science Olympiad, making it to the state competition. That's really hard to do. So again, thank you to the parents who spent so much time supporting these students. Extended Learning Opportunity Program, ELAH, will start soon and you should be getting more information in a couple of weeks about that. And then I just put this on here because I wanted everyone to know, he probably didn't see this before. But Dr. Reiman is being honored at the California Association of African-American Superintendents and Administrators next week and it's very exciting. Huge honor. And that's it.
Congratulations, Dr. Reiman. With regards to, so I want to confirm that the CUSIACs have received our test. We got them today. Thank you. If for any reason my kid wasn't at school this week, needs to get a test, are they available anywhere? Like if someone missed the opportunity to get it from their school site this week? Or?
So all the school sites have the members of the test. If for some reason somebody's out.
Go to your principal.
Unfortunately, nobody's going to be at the school site next week.
Understood.
So they wouldn't be able to.
Understood. Thanks for the information. I appreciate that we're just doing that as a district because that really helped us at the winter break. I just had a question about our recruiting effort. Congratulations on that. Where does this, does this put us ahead of the curve? Are we sort of on track to make sure that opening day of school in August, we have all of our positions filled?
That is the plan. That's why we went so early and we're ahead of a lot of the school districts. And we're continuing to recruit for special positions such as special education. So we'll continue recruiting that part of it, but we are really ahead of the game compared to previous years.
And if I miss this opportunity, is it pretty obvious on our website, like how to apply for a position in our district?
Right, if so, you go through the human resources and then the employment tab. It's called adjoin.org. You can also search us by school district and we have all our positions listed.
Just wondered if there's a way to watch Jason get his award.
It's at the conference on the 30th and I will be there, but it's in San Francisco. If, I don't, in Sacramento, I'm sorry. But I don't know if they're actually streaming it or not. I will find out and let you know. But I will videotape.
Any other questions? So I am opening the public hearing to present the sunshine proposals for CVUSD and CVTA.
So this is just a formal public hearing to allow the public to give comments on either of the, the CVTA contract that both CVUSD and CVTA have negotiated. So this is just our initial step in looking forward to an interest-based negotiations with CVTA and looking for completing a three-year successor agreement once again.
Amy, are there any requests for? Then I will close the public hearing. And we'll move on to approval of the personnel report.
I'll move approval of the personnel report.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or question? All right, Mike, your vote, please.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the personnel report is approved. Item D. Adopt declaration of need for fully qualified educators.
Just a normal process. We always have this on here. For fully qualified educators from July 1 to June for next year.
I move that we adopt this fully qualified educators declaration.
And I second it.
All right, are there any questions? All right, Mike, your vote, please.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the declaration is adopted. And item E, adopt A to G completion improvement grant plan.
Okay, so as a reminder, this is a follow-up action item on the presentation from our last board meeting. The A through G grant really is a capstone on all of the other academic interventions that we do from K through 8. And then the A through G grant really supports college readiness for our students at the high school level. The only adjustments that were made were adjustments, if you remember, the exact dollar amount was released to us. And so we made the, fine-tuned the dollar amounts to match that total grant amount.
This is an action item.
As we learned all about this at the previous meeting, I would move that we approve this.
I will second.
Are there any questions? All right, Mike, your vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the plan is adopted. All right, approved facilities use agreements.
This is for Adobe, for CV, for Castro Valley Ed Foundations, Spring for Education. And we are bringing it to you since there will be alcohol.
I'd like to move approval of the facility use agreement for the alcohol use request for the Adobe Arts Center with CVEF.
Thank you, Vice President Whitaker.
I will second it.
All right, are there any questions? All right, Mike, your vote?
Yes.
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 Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the agreement is approved. Superintendent's report.
I don't have much other than just reminding everybody that CVEF event is on April 22nd and the Sports Foundation Dinner is on April 10th. And those tickets, I think, are actually sold through Rotary, although you can also, if you go on their website, you can email Mr. Ritchie. And then wishing everybody a wonderful spring break.
Thank you. Board member reports.
I went to the parent leadership, what do you call it? Advisory Committee, sorry. And I just want to thank all the parents and guardians who were involved with that and their enthusiasm for, and just sort of keeping things going throughout COVID and making sure that our, our school communities are continuing. Went to the Castro Valley Education Foundation meeting after our last board meeting and they are busy getting ready for their fundraiser. Just mad props to them and how they are really trying to connect their mission to the community and really more deeply engage the community on their mission. And then lastly, had an impromptu school visit with, with the superintendent over to our preschool here. Had a great time and really just was excited to see another way that we're impacting our community. And hope, you have to be three years old to go to our state preschool. So I encourage anyone who has a three-year-old to consider, consider that as an option. Thank you.
I was at the SOAR meeting. It sounds really funny, but it's a better name than what it was, for sure. And it was probably one of the better meetings we've ever had with that committee, actually. That was very good. And last night I was with Jason, at least online, at the Spanish Language Immersion Advisory Committee meeting. And I have a couple of things to say about that. One is, I mean, they're going to come and talk to us about it, but I'll steal a little bit of their thunder here by saying they're making actually remarkable progress. I was really astounded. They're thinking through the secondary schools and how to make that work. They've got a lot of applications for not that many seats it turns out and have hired staff. And the final thing is, they were able to squeeze in an application for a grant. The state woke up and decided that this was a good idea. The good news for us is that they reckon we're about a year ahead of everybody else because ours is almost to be implemented. So just a lot of really great work there. So I really enjoyed that as a, as a layperson, listening to these professional teachers talk. And the final thing I'll mention is, you know, Bill Quirk is retiring this year, so we have an open seat in the Castro Valley area for, I think it's Assembly District 20. There are four candidates declared for that and the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring a candidate's night. So if you could mark your calendars for April 11th. It's a Monday, 6:00 PM at Chabot Theater. We'll have all four candidates there and we can ask them all kinds of questions about education, for example. So just. So just, it should be an interesting evening, so that's all I have. Thanks very much.
All right. So I went to quite a few things since the last meeting. Last week was CSBA, or California School Boards Association's Legislative Week. I met on Tuesday with Assembly Member Bauer Kahn. Oh, I should say, because our Senate district has changed from Senate District 10 to Senate District 9, I had many more meetings to go to because I had to go to both the old way it is and the new way it will be. And so met with Assembly Member Bauer Kahn, who's on the other side of the hills here. Then on Wednesday, Senator Wachowski, or a staff member. Then Senator Glazier, Assemblyman Bill Quirk. Those three were on Wednesday. On Thursday, met with Mia Banta and staff from Nancy Skinner's office. And besides that, there was a regional board meeting for our SELPA, Special Ed Consortium of the Castro Valley, Hayward, San Leandro, and San Lorenzo. And then also went to the League of Women Voters meeting about Women's History Month locally. Very interesting.
I attended the Special Education Parent Meeting, and I just want to thank the parents for sharing openly and letting me listen. And that is all for me.
Thank you. And I actually haven't represented the Board in anything since our last meeting. I was supposed to go to the Marshall PTA meeting but missed that because our workshop went over, so I will be visiting with them in May. And that's it. All right, meeting adjourned.